All right, Joe's gonna join us hopefully soon. Two items on the agenda tonight, the first item is the Village Hall phone system. Mr. Donovan.
Well, we really don't, I really don't have anything to present except the fact that Bloopers discussed it and we're going to have, what's the name of your?
Lance Lloyd from Lightwave Communications.
Yes. Whatever you decide. I'm going to meet with the Bloopers committee to look at the details. Talking about the Village phone system, they're gonna have someone come in next week or next month and talk about it.
What stone system?
The phone system.
Oh, phone system.
Yes, yes. Not the stone system, the phone system.
And we have three bids.
We have, we have three, yeah, we have three bids and this is one of the key. I texted him, he'll be here, I'll text him while we're talking.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Mrs. Cernick, resolution to authorize fiscal officer to make any or all necessary requests for available tax advances during the year of 2016 in Sinclair and Emergency.
Yes, this is the standard yearly request that we do so that the auditor's office of Mahoney County can pay us our taxes as they collect them and we don't have to wait then until a final settlement to get our money. Also, did you receive a copy, did you pass out the ordinance for financial institutions?
Yes, just on my report.
Okay. This was added, Mayor. The ordinance appointing the depositories. We actually were kind of postponing this, waiting to see if we'd get them all in at one time, but we've waited long enough, this needs to be done. If we do get any additional ones, we can always amend this ordinance, but we need to put this in place. So this is the ordinance appointing Farmers, National Bank, Key Bank, National Association, and we have a new one this year, PNC Bank, that has asked to be designated. That does not mean we will open an account necessarily, but we do have to have this in place for anyone we do open an account with. We currently do have accounts with Farmers and with Key Bank. Key Bank, I believe, is the mayor's, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then Farmers is everything else that the Village has. Not counting, of course, the Stark accounts that we have. So those are both going to come out of finance. And also, I would like to out of finance tonight make a motion to designate the bank account signatures. We've done this in the past, usually we do it and then we don't do it again until we change them, which could be four or five years. In reading some of the minutes of other entities, I see where they're doing it every year, the beginning of the year, and I kind of like that idea because first of all, I could be gone, he could be gone, anybody could be gone, and then you're trying to figure out who are the deposit players supposed to be. So this way we'll do it at the beginning of each year, we'll designate the signatures, they'll stay the same. Currently, we have the mayor, the fiscal officer, president of council, and then Mr. Limer is the councilman who is designated out of finance as the next in line. I will not be on that list since Nick is fiscal officer, that would be a conflict of interest. So that's pretty much housekeeping for what's gonna come out of finance tonight.
And we don't have to sign every year, this is just sort of like an update that this is who it is. She told the mayor's court stuff, she says the Supreme Court too, correct? I think it's on the Supreme Court, Ohio, I assume.
I believe.
Yeah, it would be Ohio. Yeah. Have a good day. Love Facebook.
Yes, I did. I give very much.
All right, anyone else have any items for caucus?
Do you have any, Joe?
No, I don't. I've actually spent the entire month on the waters.
Nice.
I have nothing.
Tell me, old.
That's it.
Dave's birthday was just.
You don't take it out there?
Same, okay?
Yeah, we've just been passing it back and forth with kids in life. Everybody's hacking it.
Nothing serious.
Have you heard anything from one guy from the university about the water testing?
No.
No?
We don't be like Flint, Michigan, right?
Yeah.
Well, that is a mess.
Anything for Budhouse here, the company?
No, we wrote the next ticket, so.
Oh, you did?
Oh, yeah. So now it's just a matter of just continuing to do it.
What do you mean, ticket?
So I wrote another citation, not a violation notice, another citation.
Is he paying anything right now?
Has he paid?
No, is he responsible for any fines?
So he was found guilty.
Yeah.
Of, of the original infraction. And unfortunately, there's another infraction back down in Struthers Court.
This is, this is a circus with this guy.
I agree.
Well, what do you think we should do next? It's all about Calazo, right? If he plays ball with us, okay.
I think, Mr. Measor.
What do you think, Anthony?
I think all we can do is be consistent and to be on top of the situation as much as the law allows us to. And by that, I mean, all we can do is continually cite him. And there's a point in time where either he gets tired of the process, you know, itself, or he does on the home what he needs to do. But, you know, when we had the case go through council and through the court in the last year and it got done, I think there was a sense, maybe on his part, that, no, I'm done with that part of it now. And Dave and I talked and immediately cited him again, that as long as you have that home and it's not looking like it should, we will keep doing this. Even if that's all we can do, I, when I have young people in front of me at court and they have minor infractions that, let's say, are, you know, breaking house arrest or, you know, testing positive, even if I just put them in detention for a day, I do it every single time consistently so they know what I'm gonna do. And at the end of the day, I just try to convey to them, I'm not going away. Maybe I am, but not for a little while longer anyway. But, but we're not going away as, as an entity, and as long as your home looks like that, we will continually cite you to the extent the law allows and you'll continue to have to go down to Struthers. And eventually Judge Lanzo is gonna blow his pork, to be, is my opinion, and it's gonna amp up as far as consequences. But all we can do is what Dave has done, which is cite him again and again and again.
Do you have anything?
I do. I do. I spoke to Mark Fortunato from Canfield and he sent me, I actually pulled it off their website, a copy of their dog ordinance. Their dog ordinance complies with what the state now has, which is you cannot segregate or discriminate against one type of dog. Our dog ordinance now says you cannot have pit bulls, they are by definition a vicious dog, and you're not allowed to do that. So I pulled Canfield's ordinance, it mirrors our ordinance in a lot of ways, you know, how it's set up, how it defines what vicious dogs are, other than, you know, the part we're gonna change. Talks about animals and dogs running at large, talks about the very things, about demusling a dog or debarking a dog. Everything that we have in our statute, our ordinance, but it is more in compliance with the law now. So I'm gonna recommend to legislation that they review this ordinance and consider replacing our ordinance with it at a future council session. I think ours is, so this one was 506, ours is, I think, 618, I think, if I remember correctly. But, but I recommend that we consider adopting Canfield's ordinance, which is defined as 506, and replace our ordinance, which I think is 614 or 618.
Oh, very session.
But I have it here, I'll make copies so legislation can have it.
Okay.
And I'll go there.
Okay, good. Mark is a good guy. He's easy to work with.
I do like him. And I, we had a public records request from WFMJ, which Nick and I and Russ complied with, and I gave the information that was requested to them.
On what subject?
They requested a role of our officers and the salaries and the records, which I reviewed. And all of our officers are required to train, certify. I reviewed the, the write-ups, which were none. I reviewed the salary and payroll. It was Jen Brindisi from 21 who made the request. And they sent a certified letter only because I'd spoken to Jennifer in December, right before Russ's dad had his, had his, you know, illness decline, health decline, and then passed. So when they sent the certified letter, I was a little surprised because I know Jen, and I said, you know, did you know Russ's dad passed? I don't know, and I apologize, I'm so sorry. So she apologized profusely, but we did get a certified letter about it. But within two or three days, it was complied with, and she gave her profuse apologies to Russ for sending a certified after hearing.
Right, good.
So if there's anything more on it, I'll let council know. We were one of, I think, four or five departments, I think, that they sent the request to. I'm not sure what they were looking for, what they wanted, but I'm quite confident that, that our department's running pretty darn well. And, and I'm happy to answer any questions you guys about it.
Thank you.
And that was it? That's my report.
See you.
All right, other caucus. Anyone else have anything? Oh, I guess I do mine. December violations bureau count has been balanced. Talked to Paula today and she had sent our mayor's court information to the Ohio Supreme Court, I guess she used to do that annually, but the year 2015, so that has been sent in. And Nick has, I've received, I've passed them on to Nick, we've got a few papers from MS Consultants about the Sheridan Road grant. So I assume now the signature required for everybody and we get those sent back so we can get that project rolling, that'll be this, this coming year. That's only, I think I'm. When are we starting receiving the funds for the, the road?
The levy?
Levy, yeah.
The levy will, money will not come in this year, it's going to actually start coming in in '17. It will be for '16's taxes, which we'll pay in '17. But we do, as you recall, have already set aside money for Sheridan Road this year. So we are gonna proceed with that.
Leonard, did we get the $5,000 from, probably?
We did not, Joe, I was gonna ask you.
I know, I called, I called him today, Mike, you know, and, but I don't know.
Did he want something from us before?
No, as far as I know, I don't know. I don't know why to hold up.
Were you gonna speak with him?
Absolutely, yeah. Because I gotta get him going in the forest too, you know. I know we've had bad weather and rainy and all that, but we gotta get action down there.
You think he would give us some stone for the parking marks, maybe?
Yeah.
Because those parking lots are a mess.
Which ones?
Collin Street and Parkway.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Put some stone down.
Sure, okay, sure, yeah. But we gotta get that big gully filled in by the Murphy Bridge, you know? And this contractor was supposed to come out and put some stakes there, and what he would like to do to move, move the path, go away from the cliff, you know? But I haven't heard of them. So I, I called him again today and he's out of town, I guess, but, you know, he's only working part-time now, he's gonna be retired. But he's a heck of a guy.
He is.
He's a sweetheart, yeah.
Joe, are those things that you're mentioning going to be what the $5,000 is used for or is that in addition?
Nope, never, I was hoping for that. It's going into, into the general fund.
Okay.
Yeah, we cleared that up, right, Bob? Yeah, yeah.
So we should have last year and this year, we should get 10,000, basically.
Yeah, that's right.
Five for this year, five for this year.
That's right.
Is he actively giving us the money from last year?
Yeah, I'll call him too.
Seeing is believing.
I'll give him a call, so, not that I don't trust you though, maybe hearing from me too, because I was there.
Well, I'm gonna call him, you're gonna call him.
You already called him now, right?
Yeah, but I never got in touch with him, you know? Okay, you call him, I'll block the five grand. Hey, but tell him this is 2016, right? And what, what date can we expect this, right? Not, not next December.
I'll ask.
Okay, you take care of that part.
Yes, sir.
Good.
Legislation, who else? Mr. Donovan?
No, I have to go. So. Earlier, we were talking about the, the gas station, Dave. Did you give us any information or details on that?
Okay, so here's what happened. Mr. Beatty was the architect on that project before he passed away. He had submitted plans for a renovation of the project through the ARB and got a zoning permit to get started and then got sick and passed away. So that's, that's where we are. Do you remember that?
And that's gonna be another station, correct?
It is, and it's actually being renovated to a Shell station. And the owner is actually, lives in Canada, has planned on moving his family here.
How about the, do we have a plan of a rendition or what's going to do?
Yeah, so I'll have to.
Have to show it to us, maybe?
I'll have to get back to you on that one.
Good.
What the difficulty lies, or where the difficulty lies, is that I've been dealing with Russ until he got sick. So we'll, we'll have to put that together.
What's going in Friendly's, you want to say?
So Friendly's, I did receive a phone call about Friendly's, and what's going in is a dentist's office, but the work, everything that they were doing was inside work, and I told them when they're ready for a signed permit to come see us. But at this point, I didn't have anything to do with it on the inside.
Cool.
Yeah, that's right. We're not, are we?
This is still coffee.
Oh, yeah, just got a bunch of certified mail back. Violations, if they want.
That they were delivering?
Yeah, I actually put these out before I got sick, so.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just in the back. It actually takes about 30 days for me to get these things back. So when I write a violation notice, it gets sent out and they try and deliver, I believe, three times, if it doesn't get delivered three times, it stays at the post office, I think, for 15 more days. At that point, either I get the whole package back or I get a receipt that they did get it. So every violation notice is about 30 days long. It's a slow process. So that's how that goes. I've got one other thing. So for the second time, I've been contacted about individuals or businesses that want to do permanent makeup. It is a new area of cosmetology, and what it deals with is people for various reasons who get either eyebrows or eyelashes tattooed on. Usually it's for people who have cancer and lose all of their hair. It's something that's being performed in salons. There is not a permit for it in either the Village or at the county level. To this point, what the county's been doing is issuing what they, I believe it's the same as a tattoo license, is what they issue. We don't have any restrictions against tattoo parlors in the Village, there isn't any restrictions on that. So it's the second time that I've been contacted about a salon performing permanent makeup.
Where, Dave?
Actually, both of them are in the plaza.
Oh.
Both locations are in the plaza. So basically, someone who has a hair salon would employ someone to come in and do, I don't think, this is my personal opinion at this point, that it is an all-day, everyday occurrence. It's my opinion that it is more of a as-needed basis. In other words, you're not gonna fill up an eight-hour day of just permanent tattooing. That's my opinion, that does not mean it's fact, that's the way it's been represented.
Would there be any, like, Health Department restriction type things?
Yeah, so the Health Department is, does regulate this activity, I believe, in the same way that they regulate a tattoo parlor. So, because it is, they do puncture the skin and it's a permanent or at least semi-permanent type application.
Do we need to make legislation to cover something like that?
So I don't believe so, here's why, we don't have any legislation on tattoo parlors. Okay? So if we treated it just as if it was a tattoo parlor, there's, there isn't anything special or against having tattoo parlors, so, you know.
All right, what's?
Anthony, should we?
I'm gonna read her, I'm gonna look it up right now. 7:30, please stand for Glenn Leans.
Please stand for Glenn Leans. The United States of America, and to the law, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of members. Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Tony Limer?
Here.
Mr. Measner?
Here.
Mrs. Cernick?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Yash?
Make a motion that we excuse Chris Yash from the meeting.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Acceptance of the minutes from the previous council meeting.
I make a motion that we waive the reading and accept as written.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Notifications of meetings and events to the public and news media. Bloopers?
Bloopers will be before the second meeting of the month, next, next month, at six, at seven o'clock, or 6:30.
Finance?
Finance will meet 1:25 at 6:30, which is next Monday.
Just you and me? Legislation?
I have nothing scheduled.
Police?
Well, we don't have a chairman yet, but when do they meet?
Oh, that's the third, right? The first.
The first.
First, the first meeting.
First.
Oh, okay.
At 6:30?
Yes.
Streets?
Well, we, we meet at 6:30, the second council meeting.
Boards, ARB?
ARB meets the first Thursday of the month, 7:00 PM, Village Hall. We did not have a meeting in January.
Planning?
Third Wednesday?
Yeah, so it'll be tomorrow.
Third Wednesday at 7:00.
Which is tomorrow, actually. Board of Zonny Appeals?
I have nothing scheduled.
Western Reserve Fire District?
We meet the second Wednesday of the month at Station 92.
Forest Board?
We meet the fourth Tuesday of the month at 7:30 at the Village Hall.
And Hyde Memorial?
That's a good one. I don't know when they, when do they meet?
I think it's first Thursday.
Nine o'clock, what time? Nine, I mean, nine o'clock, what day ago? You looking at that?
First Thursday.
The third Wednesday of odd months.
Every other month, right. Third Wednesday of odd months at 9:00 AM, that's what they get.
So give me that again, please. It's the third Wednesday of the odd months at 9:00 AM, okay.
Okay. Don't worry, it'll be March, January, March, odd months, 4, 5, 7, 8. Report from Mayor, I sort of gave everything in caucus, only thing I did forget to mention, and Dave knows that too, there is a new bakery in that plaza also, correct? Did that just open today?
Yeah, it's a new bakery.
Yeah, there's a nice piece of paper Sunday, though.
So, I just have new stuff to work on.
What day is the Hyde meeting?
Third Wednesday, which would be the 16th of March at 9:00 AM.
Oh, shit. What is it?
March 16th.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
At 9:00 in the morning, right?
That's what it says, yeah.
I said my report from caucus ago, and I, permit, said my mayor's report or not, I don't care if you were done. You already gave it?
Yeah, in caucus.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Make a motion to approve the mayor's report given, during caucus?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Report from fiscal officer.
Okay, I'm circulating around the list of bills to be dated, and I'm also circulating around the monthly bank reconciliation, everything that records have, as of 12/31, for your signatures. You have in front of you the, you know, numbers, as of 12/31, every fund, ended the year in the black. I will have a more detailed report for you, probably the first meeting of February, as to the finances. I submitted a certificate of estimated resources to the county auditor with the actual 1-1-16 fund balances. The employee W2s were all done and sent out. Federal and state fourth quarter and annual payroll returns have been filed, and you had in your mailbox this week notification that, everyone get their, I did that and then I also did the, you know, committee.
Oh, very good, yeah, that's, excellent job.
And that's it, I'm.
Question two, seven, next report. Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? On that thing, Joe, on this, that does show all the meat behind the reading on it, on this. Okay. Thank you, Nick. All right, anything from our deputy clerk?
Listen.
Report from zoning administrator.
Submitted in caucus.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Report from solicitor.
Actually, I had, I have two more things now, see what happens when you don't, you know, prepare. When you don't finish it, what I'm opposed to. The one thing was, I talked to Miss Stacy, Barbara Stacy, the other night, I was, I was somewhere and she came up to me. They've done three readings on the stream in the past month.
Who, who, who did them?
YSU.
Oh, because we were talking about the.
Yeah. Don't pull me on the readings, but these are the general, you know, numbers. 12,000, 16,000, and 14,000, those are the levels of bacteria.
That's a good one.
And I said, that sounds high. I said, wasn't 2,000? She goes, no, it's supposed to be around 500. I said, oh, so she could not make it tonight, but she asked me to convey.
This is Stacy?
Yes, could not make it tonight. I asked her to please get that information together and bring it to us as quickly as she can.
Good.
She seemed to correlate, or from talking to the folks at YSU, that it was septic going into the stream and then running down here. Now, I don't know if that's true, but that was her, her idea. So those are the three readings, as I understand them to be.
Wow.
So if that's true, we're gonna have to figure out, obviously, what, what steps we take. We have about two more months of really cold weather, that'll keep everyone away from here for now, but we're gonna have to come up with something sooner than later, probably.
Didn't the county offer, didn't they say that if we found that the, the levels were high, that they would get involved with us to research the sources and the EPA, the gentleman that you had come from?
Yes.
They all said that they would get involved, so really, we just need to call on them to, to follow through.
Yes. And I happened to see Sherrod Brown's liaison to the area. I'm low raising her last name, trying to find her first name. I forget her first name now, but she is Sherrod Brown's liaison, she is stationed in the area, and I said, we may need their help in trying to access funds to clean this up if indeed it is what I think it is. She said they'd be happy to try to help, so I'll reach out to her again when I get the results, and I'll try to follow through with that. I'll, I'll work on this.
I suggest that we keep a written documentation of what we're trying to do. I said, it'll all come back to us eventually. And so we should, you know, have a written record of what we're trying to do to protect ourselves, or at least verify what we've tried to do.
So this was all from YSU testing?
Yeah, Sarah, low raising her name.
Okay.
This was YSU, this was the professor who, she was.
Professor Jones, I thought his name was.
I, I don't remember for sure.
Okay, now, Bob, street sidewalks and drainage should be involved, right, with the summary?
Now, Bob, street sidewalks and drainage should be involved, right, with the summary?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not on that job.
Are we going to go through with asking the county health department to test also?
You know, I will call Ms. Sweeney. And, and I also saw, actually, Ryan. Ryan Teacat. At the one of the trustee events. And I'll reach out to him as well. I'll let everyone know.
See what they recommend. Tell them what you found out.
Yeah. And where do we go next? So I'll, I'll work on that. But I wanted to counsel them now, what I knew. And then the other two things. One is, I got a letter from Paula, was addressed to Tim and the chief as well, the mayor and the chief, about House Bill 247. Did you get that?
Yes. She wants us to know what to do with some of these old tickets, I think, that...
And I remember researching this years ago. Came out in 2013, I was trying to find it real quick, but it came out in 2013. And I remember reading it through. It was for people that had tickets that were more than five years old that were not collected, that you can write them off, the clerk can write them off. But my, if I remember, my interpretation was you needed the judge of the area in which the jurisdiction resided, which was Judge Landau. And I also wanted Chief Beatty to be involved in the process. So my response to Paula was that she needed to go down to the Struthers and ask Judge Landau to have the fines and costs taken off. And if the mayor and the chief did not have an objection, or council had no objection, neither did I. I routinely do this in juvenile court when I have, well, I usually get it because I have a kid who I sentenced to prison at, let's say, sixteen, fifteen, sixteen, and they're there for three or four years. And they come back and they're trying to get a job, and they're still owing hundreds of dollars in fines, and I'll write them off to help them get on with their lives. Some of these folks may go to prison and maybe they forget about it. Some people just run from them, don't really try. We had a company that was trying to find everyone and search them down and get collections, and I don't know how the collection had gone. I don't think they went very well.
We never did.
Yeah. So, so I will pull it up again and look at it, and I'll talk, I'll advise council at the next meeting. I'll give you the update on the law. Paula did want, um, want some guidance. And then the final thing was from, from Dave, the letter to the young lady. Actually, I know her, I know her husband, Jennifer Curz. Her husband's Jeff Curz. He's a friend of mine. And in all, um, open, full disclosure, he's, he's helping me on my campaign. So I, I don't know if I should give the opinion on this.
What is it about?
It's about the permit request. This was from Dave to Ms. Curz. Ohio, Village Pollin does not have a specific permit for permanent makeup and is not object to it being performed by Jennifer Curz within the advanced skin spot. This is what Dave was talking about. You know, I'm gonna look, like, I was gonna look prior, and I still will, but if I feel that there's a conflict in my opinion, and in fact, I know Jeff, then I'll let council know and then go from there. I don't wanna, you know, I don't want everyone to know. But, I mean, no, I won't say something that's not with the law, it's like, but, but I do know that.
Just so you know, I've already submitted one identical to that with a different person's name on it.
Did I okay that?
No.
Oh.
I was thinking, I thought it was a one-time thing, it would never happen again.
I wish I would have, then it would have been an issue.
So...
So let me look, and if there's any issues, I can maybe reference it in the other letter, which we don't have holding on this.
That's already happened. That, that was done in the summer.
Okay, never mind. Let me look anyway. And then, but I'll give this back to you for now.
Okay.
And I won't give it back.
What's the subject here?
It's the, it's the permanent makeup that Dave was talking about, you know?
Oh.
About doing?
Oh, yeah.
Tattoo and is it okay?
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay.
My feeling is that we have nothing in our statute of ordinance that addresses it. I wanna make sure about that.
Oh, okay.
And, and then I'll, I'll come.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
That's it.
Motion to approve the solicitor's report?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Sure answer.
No.
Report from chief police and street commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Should be weighed in on salt and overtime earlier, right?
Yeah. For, uh, I can put my report with pension on building and repair, painting. It's a good thing.
Motion to accept the reports of police and street departments?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? All right. Report from engineer. Reports from outstanding committees of council, finance, wage, audit, and insurance.
Well, as everybody knows, we're working on budget. So if you have requests, we need for you to submit them to us. We'll be meeting on one day for the first meeting. We are pretty much going with what we had, probably, at last year's budget, but if you have extras that you are looking for, that's no promise, because we don't know if we have extra money yet. But if you do have some requests, please get them to us as soon as you can.
Could you, could you go through the process here of how often we'll meet, and then when the budget's gonna be presented to council? Approximately?
I forgot, this is a new one for you. Yes, we, we generally meet two times to set the budget. We usually don't get it all done in one. We've tried that. Most of the time, we go over. First, we have to disagree, of course, and then agree. So, um, you know, so we know what everybody's looking for. It's kind of tough to set a budget unless we go with an identical budget to last year, building in for those few things that we know are coming, such as the levy, not the levy, the Sheridan grant for this year will not be covered by the levy, but it's going to be covered by us. There's a few other things that Russ has told us about in our meeting tonight for streets that we will be building probably into the budget. But we still need to hear from all of the main committees, what you're looking at, what you're thinking about, and what you're requesting. Once we do that, two, two or three meetings to get that worked out, we must have our budget passed and submitted to the county auditor's office, um, March...
April one.
April one?
March 31st, April 1st.
Okay.
And with the, with the, with the cert that I just filed within the weekend, they'll be getting me that back, and when the cert is set, that'll set the amount that you're ever spend out of each of the funds.
So we should get that fairly soon.
That's what they said.
So, and that's another issue. We need that document before we can actually permanently pass the budget, bring it to the council table. Once we get that certificate, everybody will get a copy of that as well from them.
Thank you.
I have one question. Sorry. Did we change the password for the Wi-Fi? Mayor, did you happen to, nothing you want to tell me, or?
No, I did not.
Nice with me?
Of course you did.
All right. It's not working. But, I mean, I thought maybe it was my prank on me again. All right.
Sorry. I would never do that to you.
Yes, you would.
That's all I had.
Motion to approve, uh, finance report?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Legislation Policy Committee?
I have nothing to report, except that we've all got copies of the dog ordinance. Maybe next meeting, we might find five minutes to take a look at it.
Okay. So you, you're not gonna call a meeting to...
Well, I'm calling a meeting for the next, uh...
For the next meeting.
Next meeting.
Okay. Police and fire committee? Nothing. Street sidewalks and drainage?
Nothing.
And bloopers?
Again, we just talked about the phone system, what was covered during the caucus.
Okay. Report from boards, planning commission?
Now, you can change that name over there. Nothing to report right now.
Next month, I'll have a great report coming. Next month's report will be off the charts.
It'll be clowning.
Board of appeals?
Nothing scheduled.
Architecture review board? Nothing at this time. Forest board?
We meet, uh, fourth Tuesday of the month, uh, here at the Village Hall, seven thirty.
Um, Heim Memorial?
You're starting to have a name, too.
At least cross them off, nothing, right? And Western Reserve Fire District, anything going on there?
No.
Well, we wouldn't met last week.
We what?
We met last week.
Yeah. Well, I'm the chairman of the fire department, and we didn't have any trouble. Just normal business. Look, Mike.
Yeah, yeah. I can't take of anything that came.
Force of special committees? Communication from residents? Any new business? Any old business?
Mr. Mayor, may I just add that, as far as finance goes and the budget, please put those requests in writing. I don't know if I made that clear.
All right. Motion to ordinances and resolutions.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three readings to pass by emergency and ordinance designated our depositories.
Second.
A roll call? Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Attorney Limer?
Yes.
Mr. Meijer?
Yes.
Mrs. Cernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Yash?
I'd like to make a motion for an ordinance appointing Farmers National Bank and Keybank National Association and PNC Bank National Association as depositories for active funds, interim funds, and inactive funds for the Village of Pollin and for the period retroactive to January the first of 2016 to December the 31st, 2020, and to declare an emergency.
Second.
Roll call? Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Attorney Limer?
Yes.
Mr. Meijer?
Yes.
Mrs. Cernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Yash?
Linda?
Yes.
Explain that to me. Why do we have all these financial institutions? Why do we have one?
Because anybody who wants to be designated, Joe, we can't refuse.
A bank?
That does not mean that we have an account there. That means that we can use them as a depository if we choose to down the road. Say we want to change from what we have over to one, or another different bank. We have the right to do that by this ordinance. We have to designate, it's in the law, we have to designate all potential depositories.
Huh. Did we do that last year?
We do it every five years.
Every five years?
Every five years, it's required by law.
Oh, that's odd. We did do it last year because we had to add Farmers.
We added somebody last year.
When they switched bankrupt last year.
So when, we can amend this one also. We only have three banks designated here, but say somebody else comes to us and they say, "We'd like to be designated as a depositary."
How about so Home Savings, we used to use there?
We did. And we did have them as one, but they no longer apply to be a depository, so...
They're out of business.
They have to, they have to apply to, you know, to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. This next one is, um, a motion to waive the three readings to pass by emergency, a resolution to make tax advance requests.
Second.
Roll call? Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Attorney Limer?
Yes.
Mr. Meijer?
Yes.
Mrs. Cernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Yash?
I'd like to make a motion for a resolution to authorize the fiscal officer to make any and all necessary requests for available tax advances during the year of 2016 and to declare an emergency.
Second.
Second. Roll call? Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Attorney Limer?
Yes.
Mr. Meijer?
Yes.
Mrs. Cernick?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Yash? Any other motions, ordinances, or resolutions?
I'd like to make a motion to designate signatures for bank accounts. Mayor, Tim Sickethuse, fiscal officer, Nick Cernick, president of council, Joe Meijer, councilman, Bob Limer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Other motions, ordinances, or resolutions? Second and third readings. This is from you Chris's thing, uh, presentation of bills.
Yeah, it is. You have to see it.
I'm gonna make a motion to pay the bills, I'm surprised that we pay our bills.
All right. Second.